Right, um, all right, everybody. Good evening. This, uh, let's call the June first, twenty twenty city council work session to order. Um, and let's see a roll call, Sue, you're, um, you got to unmute already.
Uh, I know. Uh, councillor Feros.
Here.
Um, councillor Johnson.
Present.
Councillor Yurnell Holloman. Councillor Martinez Blancarte.
Present.
Thank you, Jules. Um, Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Councillor Bacon. Councillor Finley. So I just haven't.
Here.
Not jo- having joined yet. Ah, here comes Ian from IT to save us. Hang on a second. I'm juggling five different things. Truman, do I need to add you as a panelist again? Cause I have you. Still as a, um. Yeah, it's not, it's not, you can unplug it. I disconnected it. Sorry, I'm trying to juggle a bunch of things here. Okay. Let me.
Can you hear me? Cause I think I'm there.
Okay. All right. Well, I have you down as an attendee too. So you're here twice. Good deal. Okay. I'm done, Rick. Sorry.
Oh, no worries. No worries. All right. Uh, let's go. We, the council agenda and meeting, uh, one item that's six D resolution twenty twenty thirty six fifty five. Jalen Valley Chamber of Commerce sole procurement procurement contract will not be held tonight. It has been moved to June fifteenth. Any other changes to the agenda, folks, for this evening, for the business meeting? All right, hearing none. Um, next, uh, let's see if we have any business items. Anyone? All right, I, I do have one just because of a couple of calls that have come in over the period of time. That have to do often with private streets and how those things are enforced. So code enforcement's been involved with, with various things. So Truman, can you give us an intro to what I'm blithering about?
Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties tonight and. Had to switch from the computer to the iPad. Um. Well, is some of you council members know, we've had, um. Some residents of the Creekside neighborhood come and express some concerns about their neighborhood. In, you know, we've taken some code enforcement action on various things, but in the process of looking at that. In looking at kind of the history of that neighborhood, how it came about, CCNRs, the Platts. We've discovered, uh, some kind of holes in the process. In that there are some jointly held elements such as two private streets. A green space with public sidewalk and a couple well-ins, uh, creek, the creek bottom well-ins area that are jointly owned. And the intent was that there be a homeowners association that would manage all that, but somehow in the process that disappeared. And we do have, in fact, some sidewalks in need of repair and no one responsible or apparently. Stepping up to be responsible about that at this point. And so in conversations I've had with the mayor, it's kind of brought to light. Problems with this kind of a development where the. City hasn't kind of stayed on top of the developer to make sure that things get followed through with. Is that a fair summary, Rick?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's excellent. I guess, you know, one of the things that I, that I get concerned about is, um, in the example of Creekside. You know, if they are responsible for the maintain- maintenance of sidewalks, common areas, um, that kind of thing. But, but there is no reserve being kept or there's no, there's no homeowners association that is doing this. It may well come as a surprise to homeowners in the future. Um, the other thing is that I, I think one of the original thoughts was whether or not the HOA. Would have had any teeth to go enforce certain rules in that neighborhood. But when we found out that the HOA did not in fact exist, uh, there went that idea. So. And then for the particular things that people are complaining about, there does not, there is not a code. That the city has that can be enforced. So, um, um, I just wanted to have you folks know that. And whether or not you think it's something that, that we should pursue. We don't know. For instance, how many of these sort of private street developments there are in town. But that may be, if you all are interested, that may be one of the first steps is to figure that out. And then see, you know, what, what, if anything, we can do after that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I?
Please.
Truman, Creekside, that's the, those are the folks that I've been dealing with for the past year, right? With, uh, the email com- communication back and forth about, um, work being done in driveways and things like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same, same thing. Um, I would wholeheartedly agree. Um, I have been. Kind of a nuisance to Truman and, and, uh, the code enforcement folks because. Um, I, it seems monthly, I'm getting emails from people in that neighborhood or one person in that neighborhood who. Has some issues that we really can't address. I mean, we can, um, and so, you know, I would be fully in favor of. You know, A, looking into how we follow up when we require an HOA for approval on a development and then fifteen years down the road. It just kind of goes away and there's no city codes to cover it and we've allowed kind of a, a higher density. Assuming that there would be stricter neighborhood rules when in fact, you know, uh, as the second or third owners of those homes come in. There's no, you know, and basically there's no, there's no rules to, except for the city codes. So. You know, I definitely would be, you know, in favor of looking into that.
Hey, can I, could I just be clear? Uh, we have had, we have found some code violations that have been remedied. And to the extent that we get complaints, um, that, that indicate that there is a code violation, we will follow up and make sure that. To the best we can that those get fixed. So we've had sidewalks repaired. We've had vegetation trimmed. We've had some of the, um. Mess cleaned up in various driveways and yards. But some of the, the consistent complaints about, um, essentially driveway mechanic work. There is no city code that would prohibit that. Except the general kind of noise ordinances, you know, they would limit the, the time you can be doing that. So you can't be doing that, you know, at two in the morning. But that's not the complaint. The complaint is, you know, um, persistent. Mechanic work, not, not a noise ordinance kind of a thing. And there, there is no, so, so long as it's not a business and our investigation has shown that it's not a business, that it's a. Hobby for this gentleman. That we have not found it, that to be in violation of any code.
Sue, did you see the note from, from Elise about being a panelist?
I'm here. Thank you very much.
Oh, good. Okay. Uh, all right. And you're, and you're a panelist and all too? Okay.
I think so.
Okay. So what do you think, folks? Is it something we, uh, we want to look into? If, uh, if you think so, give us a thumbs up or an indication. Um. Right? Okay. Yes. How many did I get? I'm sorry. One, couple got nods. Okay. Yeah. If we could, then it looks like, it looks like we'll go, we'll bring it back up and, uh. And we'll see. Um, and here's a, there's a Connie, uh, comment from Ronnie, Boston Act. If you all should be able to see that. Yeah. And we'll, we'll look into this and, and not just specifically to this instance, but I think broader as well as to. You know, how we handle these things, as Patrick said, so. Alrighty. Um, anything else, folks? Any other business items?
I had another one. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm gonna be.
No, it's good.
Um, I had a crazy idea about the Wolves and People, um, TLT dollars. And, um, was hoping that we could, um, address that separately from the, the budget. Maybe even push it to the fifteenth. I know we have to put it in a fund, but, um. The, my feeling was that since that money was awarded on a, uh, application basis, uh, for different projects. I, I'm feeling like we should do that process again and just have the city council run it and have people do applications and we'll just. Reconstitute the applications they filled out before. Um, that way visitor center, um, visit Newburgh. Any other tourism type, um, activity could be, um. Applied for that money and then we could, uh, dole it out and, and look at, uh, you know, doing that in a more. Equal way that it was awarded before. It just feels, it feels very, to me anyway, it feels very, um. Random to just split it in half and, and call it good. You know, and, and staff's trying to do it the best they can with, with, uh, with that money, but, um. That was just my thought is I'd, I'd like to, to run a, a, uh, application process and then award grants, um, out of thirty thousand if that's. You know, the council would, would agree with that. And, and again, Visit Newburgh in the, in the chamber could both apply for that and for the, the money. And then we could figure out what exactly they're going to do with it instead of just sending it off.
Yeah, I, I know we had some discussion on this too. I mean, Downtown Coalition's another one possibly could be, could do something. You know, we gave them some money last year. Um, so yeah, I'd be in favor of that. Um, again, but I, you know, like Patrick said. Don't want to necessarily have to push it on to staff, but if the council, we could run it and we'll, uh, try not to make too much of a mess of it. So. Anyway, I, yeah, I'm in favor, but anybody else?
I'd like to hear Dan's thoughts on that, not to put you on the spot.
You know, I think it's a great idea generally. Yeah. You know, I think that, that grant program concept is one that I would favor. For, uh, larger portion of TLT. I think thirty thousand, you know, I, I think even having, uh, council take the, the brunt of the work. And it's not a lot of money for, uh, you know, what will be, I'm guessing a fair amount of effort to go through applications. So I guess to the extent that you're willing to do that, great. Um, I guess that would be also. An opportunity to test going back, what I think is going back in history, if I recall, uh, to the time when those, uh, awards were, you know, there was part of that money set aside. And, and a, a program, um, you know, TLT related, uh, program existed. I, I do think that that's a great way. To build infrastructure that can amplify, uh, tourism and, um, arguably amplify the dollars, uh, we receive from TLT. I, I guess I would also the wonder with, uh, COVID right now, how successful you're going to be in getting people focused on applying. And, um, you know, what, what that would look like. I guess that, that'll be the proof's in the pudding, right? You know, we put it out there and, and see. Who steps forward. And I guess if you don't get, um, viable applicants, you can always keep the money and, and roll it into another. You know, sort of a grant program, maybe. Um, just, that would be my initial thought.
Well, to, to follow on a little bit on what Patrick said too. I mean, at least then, you know, even if, even if we only got. Applications from the chamber and from Taste Newburgh, we would still have something in writing requesting the amount, the money. Um, so.
And something to measure against the success of what they're using it for, for sure. Yeah. I think there's benefit to it for sure.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts on that? Okay. Want to give us a thumbs up or if that's something we want to try to pursue? I'll give it a thumbs up. Anybody else? Got two. So I got thumbs. I got waves, thumbs. Okay. Yeah, we got nods and everything. So it looks like we're good. We'll, we'll go on with that. Uh, and we can get on that, you know, right away. We could start hashing out an application and, uh, there we go. All right.
Mayor.
Yes, please, Truman.
Going back to the, um, uh, Creekside issue, could I get a little clarity about what the council actually wants, uh, addressed and returned to the council?
Well, you know, what, the one question that I'd like to, is to know how many of these there are out there? How many of these potential private road things? Would be one. And then, you know, how we can, I don't know if there's a nuisance ordinance or something like that. I, I don't know. Or as Patrick said, require the HOA, but I'll let Pat.
So, um, just to jump in, I'm, I'm really torn about this one because I want to solve the problem. But I also don't want to have staff digging through, you know, twenty years of development applications to find out. Where we need HOAs and where we don't. And then do, how do we retroactively make them do an HOA? And. He, I just, I don't know how that works. And so, you know, my feeling on this one is. I think Doug and his staff are good enough to know that, you know, they have this under control going forward. What I'm concerned about is, are these, these higher density developments where, um, there are activities going on that. Under the old HOA rules, they weren't allowed, but now that the HOA is gone, they are. Can we do? Are there special districts that we can set up that have different ordinances in the rest of the city? If, if there's a higher density development, can we have, can the city run that? Do we want to run that? How do we require a development that was required to have an HOA that doesn't anymore reconstitute it? Is that, you know, I just, I, I don't know the state of play. I don't know what the rules are. I don't know where the. You know, I don't know what the field of play is on this. So basically just options is what I'm looking for. And then hopefully we can make heads or tails out of it.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts on this? You know, uh, the other thing is Creekside may be an isolated instance and, you know, maybe, maybe it's not, you know, and that would be good, but I don't know. Is that, is that clear or more clear, clearer, Truman?
Uh, that is more clear, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other council business items? Uh, and we're, we're clear enough on the, on the grant award thing for Wolves and People money? We got that. Okay. And we'll start to draft something on that. All right. All right, Dan. I think we are made it to the point of council goals, sustainability, livability and development.
Okay. Um, so I'm prepared some slides, uh, for this discussion. And there I see them coming up and, uh, you know, really just trying to guide that discussion somewhat briefly. But maybe provoke a little more conversation around this, um, next slide. You know, and so this is, uh, the first of what will be a number of conversations around, uh, the adopted. Council goals for the year. And, you know, we talked about it in the process discussion, you know, these are really big goals and, uh, really. This one in particular is one of the bigger ones for staff. And I think, um, the discussions we've had internally, uh, we were, we're looking for some. Feedback from the council. And so, you know, these questions will come now and they'll come at the end, similar to the previous discussion we had. But, you know, in essence, uh, food for thought, uh, you know, some of the, the questions that we had developed as staff. And really kind of focused on, um, defining sustainability, uh, the vision for sustainability. Uh, strengths and areas of improvement for the city in the area of sustainability, specific to a sustainability program. Uh, since I believe that is really the goal. Um, is the focus internal or external, uh, or both? And, um, programs that the council would like to prioritize. And I think with that, uh, thinking about other, uh, things we might add to the mix. Rather than maybe things we're already doing, but obviously we could also amplify things we're doing. Uh, and then the last one, uh, at least for my list, uh, which is not exhaustive, but, um, what does success look like? Next slide, please. So just to reiterate the goal, um, collaborating with local partners and with entities like ICLI. I believe that is how they pronounce it. Um, and so, uh, ward, coordinating with ICLI. In the development of a sustainability program. Next slide. So what is sustainability? I've got sort of the global definition from the UN. Uh, sustainable development is development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. The state has adopted, uh, a legal definition of sustainability, which is pretty similar. You know, essentially to meet, um, current needs without sacrificing future needs and, and future generations' ability to meet their needs. Um, and then the dictionary definition, um, is a process or state that can be maintained at a certain level as long, uh, for as long as wanted. And I thought that was actually kind of an interesting one because, um, begs the question, how long do we want this thing to go? And I think that's hopefully open for discussion, especially as we go down the path. Thinking that we're not always going to want to have the same, uh, actions or programs that we have now or that we come up with as we go along the journey. Next slide. So, um, the triple bottom line, uh, it's one that hopefully everyone has at least heard about. The idea of planet, people and profit, uh, or people, planet, profit or planet, profit, people. Um, you know, just trying to balance the level of, uh, each in, in trying to find, uh, something that is sustainable. So, you know, you can see the concentric circles here, um, the visual of, you know, the idea of social sustainability, economic sustainability and environmental. You know, just trying to, to find something that doesn't forsake one of the three for the sake of the others. To me, that's something that we should aspire to in our programming and that, um, you know, broadens out the arguable. And product of a sustainable, sustainability program, uh, to one that is a little bit more. Than just environmental or just, uh, arguably people. And looking for benefits that, uh, can meet, uh, all those constituencies. Next slide. So this is one that may be less familiar, but this is a different, uh, three-legged stool or, or triple. Um, and so this is the triple helix. This is a concept that, um, is one that, uh, I worked on in, in, in other organizations where you have a college or a university in your community. Or adjacent to your community. And it is one that I think could be really successful here, which is that. You look at a program that really thinks about the triple bottom line, but also tries to incorporate. Government, industry and university i- in a collaborative. And so you use. The ideas and the innovations of the university to create practical applications in the university or in the industrial setting. In the, um, the local business setting. And then, um, work collaboratively with, uh, government, you know, on issues related to, um, amplification or, or, um, success in that industry. And so there's ways that, you know, our policies, procedures, uh, the taxes, et cetera, will have an impact. And, um, we obviously also have, you know, I mentioned, uh, uh, it, this slide mentions the infrastructure. So we have the ability through urban renewal, for instance, to focus on, uh, infrastructure as, as something that government can help industry with. But by incorporating the third part of this, the triple part, the, or the double helix. We've got the university sort of saying, look, here's some great ideas, some cutting edge, um, innovations that will help us be more sustainable. In our practices and, um. Could be more strategic for, for government as well in the application of resources. Next line. So drilling down a little bit into the three-legged stool, you know, the social or human capital, human resources. That, um, you've got, uh, the concepts of equity, uh, that's a different goal discussion, but, um, the idea of, of balance. Of good jobs, you know, creating something that is economic, you know, tying it back to that other, uh, leg. That, you know, the good jobs. Equals a life or should. And, um, that, that's part of the overall mix that, um, really trying to find, um, something that, that creates the community that we want. And, and a true community feel. Uh, so social connection, like the, um, the downtown, uh, the festival here, which is, um, the old fashioned festival. And so having something that creates interconnectedness within the community is, is part of social element of sustainability. And, um, you know, it's something that I think the, um, community vision document, the, uh, Newburgh plan talks a lot about. And the emphasis on, uh, community engagement, community leadership and livability in those, uh, pillars in the plan. Uh, really to me focus on the idea that, um, the community is committed, the community really wants a social sustainability, uh, element to this. And that there are things that have, uh, an impact on, um. On community members, you know, the, the idea is the, the social determinants of health is one that's been out for a long time. But, you know, the idea of where you have come from and the issues and, and things that you've dealt with in your life really have an, uh, impact and shape the health of the individuals. And there are things that we as a society can do to address those and, and really improve the overall. Sustainability of individuals and therefore our, our community. Looking a little bit more inward, I, at least in my thinking, was the culture of innovation. And succession planning, uh, really thinking about sustainability of our resources as a, a local government and. You know, trying to build, uh, community, uh, and an organization that serves the community. That really truly is trying to continue to improve and, you know, has a continuous improvement mindset. Um, and part of that is knowledge management, making sure that people know how to do the jobs and also that they're given latitude to improve on those jobs. Next slide. So the second leg is, uh, of the third, three-legged stool is economic or financial resources. And so thinking here about, um. You know, the business practices that we have as a, you know, are an organization, but also as a community. And looking into inwardly about the policies, procedures, uh, that's always a good place to start with these kinds of things is. How do we do it now? And why do we do it this way? And how might we change and adapt to meet, uh, either current need or future challenges? The idea of saving money is always important, um, you know, doing more with less or, uh, just doing more and not having to. Uh, outlay the resources by being more efficient. Um, you know, systems approach, so, um. Excuse me, thinking about, you know, someone else's waste is, is a resource for, uh, another business and, and really trying to think about. How we can connect the dots for the, um, the community businesses in a way that will, uh, be more of a closed loop system. That makes us more sustainable as an organi- as an overall organism, a community organism. Then thinking of a little bit more again inwardly, the idea that. The city as a living laboratory or a place to pilot, uh, projects and, and ideas, you know, this goes back to the triple helix. And, um, you know, a way to engage the university or other universities in the broader region. You know, try and get the benefit of, of really great ideas and, and, you know, have your hand up to, to try them out. And that's often a way to get things. And test them, uh, but also, um, you know, just a way to, to leverage the intellectual capital out there. Uh, destination branding is, uh, something, you know, that, that I think you can arguably hang your hat on when you think about the. Visit Newburgh and the marketing that is done here, uh, or of here, I guess, to the, the broader, um, the region and, and the, the, the. The country, uh, when we're branding ourselves as, as a more sustainable place, that that really can draw in a certain type of clientele as well as. You know, kind of amplify the, you know, how people think of, uh, the community. And, uh, finally, again, internally, thinking about environmentally friendly purchasing. It's a concept that's been out for a little while as well. That, um, focuses on using resources, uh, or purchasing resources in a way that is thinking about the triple bottom line. And thinking about, uh, supporting local companies often, um, sometimes with an incentive, but also, uh, thinking about how to. Encourage those companies that are providing services to the city to be, um, more environmentally friendly or, uh, to think more about social practices and those kinds of things as well. So, uh, encouraging others to adopt that triple bottom line mentality. Next slide. So the third leg of the stool is the environmental and, um, that, that's one where. Excuse me, we're looking at, uh, protecting and preserving natural resources. That's sort of, it seems to be where sustainability started. And, you know, thinking green as, as people like to talk about it or, or did like to talk about it. You know, that can be less energy, uh, reduction in waste. Um, it can be lower emissions, you know, something that our fleet, uh, might take advantage of. Or other, uh, larger, um, companies that have a fleet in town could also. companies that have a fleet in town could also do. And it also could lead to a greater biodiversity. And that's something that I've seen in other communities as well as thinking about, you know, how do we connect to nature and connect our community and residents to more nature? Certainly is less of a problem in a place that's so green, but, you know, it's one of those things that in proximity to pardon to natural experiences can change people's mindset and relax them and have a a true health benefit that I think has been measured in other communities. Next slide. So this is a list of a few things that in my few months that I've been able to determine we've either done or are in the process of doing. And so just wanted to note the fact that we have done some work in sustainability already. And so this is not necessarily, and I know that you all probably know this, that it's not a new thing. It's not something that we are at ground zero, but we certainly can get a more concrete plan together on. Be more intentional, but we've already done light conversions to LED in many of our facilities and, you know, in the process of finishing that. I know we've done some recently, replacing fixtures for low-flow or higher efficiency models. We're working on solar farm. We have the redundant water supply that we're working on now and through the summer. We've obviously, as a community, we've prioritized sidewalks and bike lane projects. And that's something that's in the Newburgh community vision. And, you know, we've definitely been adopting technology more and more into our business practices to be more efficient, both with our time, but also trying to find ways to to not have to essentially add staff for functions that we can do with technology or, you know, we don't need as much paper or or things like that to take advantage of. And I would actually say that COVID has shined a light on the idea that we can do more things remotely through telework and also through providing services remotely. We are working on a peer support program right now through the Newburgh Dundee Police Department. And that's something that has that social component to the sustainability. And then finally, Cartograph, that's something that we're working on with Public Works and be able to track assets and time and work we're spending on them. And thinking about, you know, improvement there, when we have a lemon, we know when we need to move on from something and those kinds of things, but it's going to be a tool that will help us gather data and be more efficient with the time and the resources we have. Next slide. So I think ICLI was a specific, before I arrived, was a specific action that was desired from the community and the city has joined with that membership. And that is obviously an action as well that I didn't mention before, but with that membership comes a greenhouse gas inventory tool that is free to ICLI members. And I think it's a good place to start with a sustainability program from the environmental side. And then the modeling and, you know, the model programs and they have practices that we can learn from other members, but also from the organization and its affiliates as well. And so things around emissions, around climate adaptation and the business programs that we might offer. To really the community. So it is desire more of an internal app, something that would be city business program is pushed out into the community. There's peer support through ICLI, you know, and their advisors. And finally, there's trainings that we can take advantage of. And so it's definitely a nice resource to have access to. And I've worked with ICLI in the past. When I worked in California and they're a well-thought-of organization. So one membership that we should definitely try and take advantage of. Next slide, please. So a few ideas, just to plant some seeds, maybe a little bit of a sustainability pun. But trying to think about what we might do. And so the idea of completing a greenhouse gas inventory, getting a baseline to be able to then establish metrics. I think that that's important to at least one of you. And I think probably several, but, you know, there's some way to think about our programming, think about how we're actually achieving results. You know, that ties to the targets and emission reduction. Developing a city sustainability team, I think there are several staff members. I know there are community members as well who are passionate, but staff members who are passionate about sustainability. And so maybe a way to continue the work and make sure that there's someone stewarding the work. A city volunteer program, it's maybe a little bit outside of the box, but a way to engage the community and engage the resources and talents of those who are really passionate about service in the community. The idea would be to coordinate with interested volunteers to work on city-related projects and have, you know, some coordination of efforts that would help implementation on certain projects or, you know, having community cleanup days and those kinds of things as well. Certainly, this is a very involved community. And so one more volunteer program may be too much, but, you know, just a thought. Internal Innovation Fund is one that can take many forms. And I've seen it in some organizations work very effectively where often there's either an incentive that is actually paid out to staff members who come up with ideas that are implementable and have a demonstrable reduction in cost to the city or in emissions or whatever the target is. And so there might be a financial reward for coming up with ideas that are going to save the city money. You know, there's also the ability on innovation funds to just make sure that your idea gets done. So there's a pot of money just set aside to implement the wild and crazy ideas. Either way, I've seen them be successful and a way to think about cultural change in the organization. Just by encouraging line staff to share their really great ideas that they have. Why don't we do this? Well, here's some money to, or an incentive to do it. You know, just to put in here the support for a Newburgh programs. And so the idea being there are a myriad of programs listed in that plan. And, you know, ideas on implementation and certainly just reading through it, I feel like I learned something every time about some really great ideas. The question obviously is, who's going to take some of those on and drive them forward? And more often than not, it looked like the city was tagged. And so to the extent to which we can figure out how to get those started and grab some, hopefully some community members and make that happen, great. But, you know, this is something that I think there is plenty in there for sustainability. Piloting things, we already kind of talked about that, but, you know, business program is one that has also, I've seen be successful where, you know, you encourage local businesses through some incentives to reduce their emissions or to reduce you know, their waste or whatever they're looking to do. I think often it helps to provide them with a big laundry list of things to do or actions that they might take and things that will save their bottom line and encourage them and then recognize them. Celebrate the businesses that participate and the successes that they have in meeting their goals. Partnerships with the community and schools is somewhat of an obvious. And there are obviously community volunteers and passionate folks around sustainability. So that would be a great place to work with folks to flesh out ideas and get some legs. Leveraging grants, you know, seems again, a bit of an obvious one, but, you know, there are funding sources out there for some of these programs, especially if we've got some of the data to be able to prove that we're going to be able to demonstrably improve things or change. And the last one is a little bit more concrete. The University of Oregon, as you may know, has a Sustainable City Year And that's actually a pretty cool thing, at least to me, that there is a program that would leverage, you know, essentially the university's program and knowledge in sort of an urbanism and sustainability way to support a city here and assess. And, you know, there's no guarantees, but, you know, I think to these, some actual desired outcome some be behind our goals, we might be able to be something like and be a great place to get some resources, some, something to maybe pursue in the future. Next slide. So thinking about community input, you know, some suggestions as well. The idea that there is already a Newburgh Sustainability Group, or arguably probably groups out there interested in helping, so do some outreach. Engaging both university and the school district who both have clubs for sustainability to really get that future generation that is coming up into the community, give them both a pre-academic experience, but also get their passion and some of their ideas and see what they can help us implement. Working with community agency partners, you know, more of the sort of normal cast of characters of folks that we work with in the community who may have some interest. Mentioned the Sustainability Cities Institute just now, and then Peer Cities as well, that there's some places to gather input from other folks. So next slide. So we're back to questions for council and I'm going to leave it there. Hopefully I haven't talked too long. But I'm hoping we can have some dialogue, maybe get some clear direction.
All right, folks, who's going to, who's going to lead off with comments? All right, do I have to call on people?
Me.
There we go, Jane.
Merrill Kunkel is heading up Sustainable Solutions Group and wants to really, they are wanting to be involved and help with this. I've been supporting them. We're planning, we're arranging a meeting with Dan at some point. They're also looking at how to establish a commission.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to get in touch with her or the group.
Yeah, she's going to contact you. It's 72 members at this point and growing. It's people who are really enthused.
Want someone else to go because I I kind of went through this through last time when we talked about it. So I don't. But if no one will, I will. Well, gee, thanks. So, of course, I, you know, have been a fan of the triple bottom line. And I love the triple helix overlay on it. Because I think, because I think it's the right thing to do. My vision for sustainability, of course, is to make sure that we do work that's sustainable. And when I say that, I'm not trying to be funny. You know, we had a sustainability committee 10 years ago when I was here. Where did it go? We had, we actually did the triple bottom line thing with either Dan number one or whoever it was that followed immediately after him for two, for two months. You know, so whatever we choose, it has to be enough and it has to have enough people interested in it that we actually are able to sustain it. Strengths, we have a lot, we have a lot, huge brain trust here, huge. And I think we should take advantage of it. Focus should be both internal and external. We should do a lot of work internally first because I think we have an obligation as the government to lead a charge. So we cannot ask people to do what we do not do ourselves. So all the way around, whether it's environmental, whether it's social. But that does not mean in any way that I believe that all of this is our responsibility to do, just to be clear on that. Programs, I think, you know, we still have a lot of internal work to do. And I think we have a lot of internal social capital, human resource work to do. Get people excited about their jobs, get people excited that it's a new day, get people, I'm really thinking about, you know, being so excited that they want to get better at their jobs and stay here and make this a career place to be. And that there's room for them to move up and that there's hope for a future for them here. And I'm going to let somebody else talk.
All right. Who's next? All right, I'm calling on people. Jules, what do you think?
So what I think is was keeping an equity lens in this. Because I think that when I personally think of sustainability, and I think a lot of folks from the Latinx community and other marginalized communities is that it tends to be like the educated, wealthier folks in the community who are having these conversations. So I would really, really like to make sure that when we are creating goals or whatever pathway we end up going with this, that we're including folks from these communities because oftentimes they will be the ones that are most affected. And you can tell in Newburgh from where a lot of the, where a lot of like the populations are broken down by ethnic groups. There are areas in Newburgh that are more heavily concentrated with the Latinx community. So for me, this is a priority. And I really appreciate that you brought this up, Dan. And I think just being mindful, for example, when we're having these conversations, when, when are we meeting, where are we meeting? So that we are really including more people in the community when we're talking about sustainability. So those are my two cents for now.
I think, Jules, I think that's a great, great point. I mean, you know, sustainability, if you price everybody out of the market for sustainability, I mean, that's that age-old thing of getting like a, you know, platinum level building that costs you three times. And that can happen all the way down through everything. So, all right, let's see. Stephanie, what do you think?
So I love what Jules just said. I think that's absolutely, we, I would like to look at sustainability within the construct of looking at equity and inclusion. So absolutely, I think that would be a number one priority. In terms of the question about focusing internally or externally, I'd like to see a two-pronged approach. And I'd like to see us focus on the internal and then really empower the other groups that are doing this and are excited and passionate about it to do the external. And then we give them sort of that platform. I think that with the goals that we have created in this council, we've given our staff a really heavy lift in all areas. And so anything that we can do to sort of outsource some of these things, I think it's the best. I also think when we're talking about sustainability, if we're including younger generations and people outside of the city staff and the council, we're looking at more sustainability in terms of those programs. Those are going to be programs that are going to continue to promote within themselves, gain members and those kinds of things. So I kind of like to see a two-pronged approach with us really trying to make more of a platform for some of those groups that are already doing it to focus on a lot of the external things. And I think it's important for then us to take their feedback and really pay attention to what they're doing and really actually give them a platform instead of just some lip service. Not saying that we've done that, but I just mean, we really need to sort of capitalize on the work that they're doing and make sure that they know that, that they can bring us anything that they need to bring us and that we will listen honestly and openly to it and make good steps in those areas. So that's my thought for now.
Yeah, very good. I mean, at least my recollection was that the ICLI thing came up because of Sustainable Newburgh. And they came and asked us to do that. And yeah, I think that's great. Elise, what do you think?
Just as my dog starts barking. I, I love what everyone had to say. I think that this is really going to spark a different conversation than we've maybe had in the past. The only thing, additional thing I would add is maybe sustainability around food. And I know that there's a lot, a lot, a lot of organizations that focus on food insecurity. And I liked what Dan had to say about social determinants of health. But I think, you know, every step that we can take to try to flip where our spending is happening. You know, focusing on spending upfront on our, on our people and our community rather than you know, a reactionary mode. I have thought about like, you know, if there are incentivizing programs that we could offer through the city. I mean, honestly, Dan coming in and doing like the couple of programs that he put together in like 30 days makes me think that we have ability to have a lot of very creative ideas around this topic. I was, you know, I don't know what's legal and what's not, but I was thinking about if there was some incentive program for restaurants to be able to you know, opt in for some sort of sustainability of their you know, opt in for some sort of sustainability of their food and, you know, giving of their of their food, if they would be able to have some sort of fee reduction or or something. But, yeah, I think that I would love to focus on food sustainability.
All right, Patrick, what do you think?
So over the last 12 months, I've learned quite a bit about this topic. I'm embarrassed to say that I, you know, it was something that I did not focus on until council created this as a goal. And in those 12 months, I've met with waste management, I've talked to PGE, I've talked to a number of different Merrill and Sustainable, the Sustainability Group. And, you know, I am still learning about this topic. What I, what I will say is I'm, would love it if the city, we have a traffic safety committee. I, I would love us to have a sustainability committee made up of citizens who, you know, this is their passion. You know, we all have different focuses, and I think bringing those subject matter experts in, in, under the umbrella of the city would A, not only make it a public meeting that that everyone could attend, and we would notice, but also it would bring in, increase our brain trust. In addition, you know, there are a number of different things that rattle through my brain as I, you know, listened to the presentation tonight. One was, you know, for those folks who own homes, are interested in solar panels and those types of things. I, you know, that can be confusing. And then in addition, I've seen other communities, and I think Newburgh has done this as well at Tunes on Tuesday, water conservation, especially during the summer, you know, have PGE in, and they offer an energy audit program where they will come out and audit your usage and find out which appliances you have that are maybe higher and and get you a different, you know, programs that you can use. I, I think some of that, you know, being in public relations, I would, you know, kind of push for the letting people know about the different programs out there and how they can be assisted with those. And I agree with everything that's been said here tonight, so great job all.
All right, anybody else? All right, well, you know, I love it. I, for me, I would, I'd love to start with this Ickley Energy Audit as a place that, you know, gives us sort of the baseline data for the city. And, you know, again, it was something that we were asked, asked to do. But then I think, you know, every, every time, I mean, I'm not just, I've said this before, and I'm not trying to be facetious, but it would seem to me that every time we open a ditch in the city, we ought to put in purple pipe because one day we're going to use reuse water in more than one place. I think this, we talked about curbside composting and waste management came us and gave us a presentation. Personally, I'd love to see it happen tomorrow. What else? I think there we could make a push to find a bottle drop in Newburgh. If you, if you have to turn in cans, you've got to go to Tigard or somewhere. But I think really, for me, initially anyway, we look internally with the, with that energy audit, and then get back to, you know, Sustainable Solutions. And of course, you know, if you're talking sustainability, then Pete Siderius and the high school, Shalom, Shalom Valley watershed project. And then, you know, the university, I just looked up quickly, I didn't know, but I guess they have an ecology and field biology major, undergraduate major. So, you know, as you, as you mentioned, Dan, we've got the intellectual capital here, and we have the excitement, you know, from, you know, I mean, it was, what do you call, who gave us the presentation? She's in eighth grade, she's now moving into high school, right? So if we can capture that energy, then I think that's, that's really cool. So that's what I got.
That was, that's Arneke that did that.
Arneke, yes, yeah, that's right. Yeah. Bridget's Arneke, actually, a name that will soon be very famous, even more famous than it currently is. So there you go. Anything else? Does that help at all, Dan?
Yeah, that actually helps a lot. I appreciate the conversation and, you know, you proctoring folks. You know, I appreciate the feedback, and I think what we'll probably do is, you know, I heard a lot of really concrete ideas as well as the, you know, reach out and connect. And so probably we'll, we'll put a plan together and and start communicating with folks who are interested in working with us, and we'll see how it goes. But we'll definitely report back at some point in the near-ish future as we go through these between now and August, sometime probably in August, September, maybe. We'll kind of see how we put this thing together in some sort of framework.
Awesome. All right. All right, any, anything else for the moment, folks? I've got 6:57. Let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at 7:02. And just stop your video. All right, folks, looks like I got 7:02 if we're all ready to roll. I will call to order the city council business session for June 1st, 2020. This is a video recorded call, meeting. So anyone who would like to comment or would like to make a comment during public comments, please connect with Sue Ryan, our city recorder. With that, a roll call, please, Sue. Sue, I think you're muted. All right.
Sorry, I keep going back and forth between these two. I'm going to turn this down. Counselor Pirros?
Here.
I see Gene, but I don't hear him.
Present.
Patrick, can you hear me? Can you nod, please? Okay. All right, Counselor Pirros, I see, so I'm going to mark as present. Counselor Yarnell Holloman. I don't see. Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
I do see Counselor Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Rick?
Yeah, present.
Counselor Finley. And Counselor Bacon.
Okay, then. With that, a pledge of allegiance, please. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and with that, the city management report, please, Dan.
Great. Hopefully, my audio is working. Yeah, okay. So this is somewhat abbreviated compared to the 10-page reports, and that is online last time's report, but I will just kind of hit the wave tops on this one. And I honestly am looking at the date, can't believe it's June. So we finished, now that we have changed to June, the Support Local Challenge, that was the last of the active programs we had for community support in response to COVID. And so that ended, I guess officially, more or less, yesterday, but I'm assuming we're still working on the details of that in finance, and they're definitely doing yeoman's work of trying to reconcile all the receipts that they've received and connect those things, those receipts with various accounts and things like that. So I imagine there'll be a little bit of shakeout as we get through all of that, but want to give them a lot of credit. What we had set aside, or what council had set aside, was $100,000 for the initial investment. You know, part of your agenda today is a supplemental budget, but I just wanted to quickly summarize that we have, at least as of the last reconciliation that I've seen, collected over 400, almost $420,000 in receipts and local spending. That includes credits to accounts and donations received. And so the credits, we have about $145,000 over that number in credits that were given over the two months, April and May, and donations of almost 17, well, I guess the actual donation amount is $17,685. So in total, credits of $163,455 over two months. So hopefully, that helped local businesses and community members, and hopefully, I'm sure they'll, like I said, there'll be some time to reconcile and make sure we're connecting all those receipts with the various folks who are looking for the rebates. But really appreciate the work the finance has done to do that. In addition to that, on Friday, we had a group of staff that were putting together our first request for reimbursement to the state through the CARES Act. So we requested reimbursement for some of the, let's see, the health kind of PPE things, as well as people's time for telework and some of the other related infrastructure to support telework. You know, a lot of different things that in total were about 150,000, over 150,000 reimbursement in this first round. We'll also likely put in for the second round for some of these supporting, supportive programs for local businesses. They just weren't accepted in this first round. So hopefully more, hopefully we'll be successful in getting reimbursed, but hopefully more reimbursements to come as well. So good for everyone. Hopefully, we're able to stimulate or at least support the economy as well as finding some, you know, a way to backfill our own coffers. Just as we get into reimb, or sorry, reopening, the library and municipal court are starting back up this week. The first stage for the library is to collect the materials that have been out in the community, and so we're kind of calling this Week Zero, where their plan is essentially to gather everything and let it be sanitized, essentially, let it, all the material sit for a few days. And then the goal is to open up to the public in a limited fashion with a lot of, you know, sort of precautions and those kinds of things that hopefully everyone will help us by honoring, but we will have a lot, have a live opportunity to go into the library next week. Municipal court will start on tomorrow, and we'll have the next two Tuesdays, at least that I'm aware of, will have municipal court, again, observing physical distance and using PPE, like masks, and just trying to make sure that we keep the priority of the community and our staff safe. On happier news, our date is on Saturday. It's just one matter to everyone that we and it will be from 4:30 to 5:30 on Saturday, the 6th. And the parade will begin in the student parking lot off Elliott Road, travel down Elliott to 99W, back up Villa, and over to Mountain View and back to the school. So definitely bring your spirit. I would say bring your chair, but we know from the Elliott Road discussions that there's not a place to sit on that road. So don't do that. But definitely encourage the community to come out and participate in that parade. Elections are coming up this week. This is the beginning of candidate paperwork being available and and election process starting. And so as you all well know, council districts one, three, and five are up for election, and filing period for candidates is June 3rd to the August 17th. And that information is on our website. Thank you, Sue. And then just something that's also on our website, I wanted to emphasize, we talked about this last time. But just for those who may still be curious and concerned, directionals. And, you know, the intent there is that we are not, very much not readdressing any properties. We're not doing anything that hopefully is is causing consternation, although I'm sure there is some level of consternation out there and confusion. But what we have been doing is working with the postal service to make sure that the ordinals, the north, south, east, and west are on the directional addresses, which should help for emergency response among other things, but should also not require any action by residents. So, you know, there is information on our website, and I know that there's been some comments back and forth and questions to our staff, and just want to encourage people to, you know, read that information on the website, and hopefully that's enough to not need to contact us, but certainly welcome to contact the city if there's additional questions. So the last item I wanted to talk about was, you know, what's happening in the world these days, I guess. Wanted to talk about the tragedy in Minnesota and kind of provide a few thoughts. First, you know, I've had the opportunity, Chief Cosmiki is attending an event in McMinnville tonight, and specifically about this tragedy. And so he, he and I have talked a couple of times about it, but I wanted to read the statement that was released by the police department on their Facebook page on Thursday, just in case people haven't, like me, haven't necessarily gone to Facebook for this, but wanted to kind of hear the the words from the chief of police, and then I wanted to add a couple of words myself. So this is Chief Cosmiki's statement, this is his words. So the disturbing video evidence involving the death of George Floyd in Minnesota has been reviewed and discussed by our entire organization. As your police officers, it is unconscionable to us that someone who is sworn to protect could justify that unlawful use of force and even have the mindset to consider it. This could go without saying, but sometimes it should not go without saying. We frequently ask our students and citizens, if you see something, say something. In holding ourselves to that same standard, it must be stated that we openly condemn the way George Floyd was treated. Newburgh Dundee Police Department officers will protect the civil rights of everyone who lives here will be expectervene upon discovering anything to the contrary. Even though Minneapolis is over 1,700 miles away, we hope the actions there do not fracture the positive relationship our agency holds with this community. Jeff Cosmiki, Chief of Police. So, you know, I just want to point out that the city council, and you don't need me to tell you, but I just will say that the city council adopted a goal to further develop an operational culture that adopts and cherishes diversity, equity, and inclusion as core value. That obviously just happened in January, but, you know, this is an opportunity, I think, for us as a community to have a conversation and to hopefully learn from something that's pretty horrible. You know, we've had all, department heads had all signed up for some training that was offered and recommended to us in Portland, the diversity and equity and inclusion issue that COVID has sort of put that on hold for now. It's my intention and our intention as a group to pursue some training on this topic, but it's also on my intention that we do more than just pursue training. So, you know, I talked to Chief Cosmiki specifically about this, that, in my view, this is needs to be a conversation with the community. This needs to be something that we do, again, more than just talk or more than just acknowledge. We need to really get out and, and, you know, engage people and really try to look for something that's, I think, organic to our community as as a response. And here, the the hurt that is is out there, you know, and I think that we're seeing it on our screens on a all-too-e often basis right now, of just various communities and cities out there where people are engaged in protests, hopefully generally nonviolent protests, but certainly there are instances where that's gone above and beyond what we generally would accept. But that shouldn't be how we look at this. I think we should look for an opportunity to learn. You know, I think we at the city condemn the way that George Floyd was treated, and his death should be a call to action. You know, every day, we should be working towards furthering our development of culture, but also we should learn and understand one another and really seek ways to have that opportunity to to meet people who are different from us and listen and truly try to understand. So, you know, as difficult as these conversations are, I think this is, needs to be something that we start a conversation in our community around, and I know the chief and I have talked about that, and it's something that we're committed to doing. So I'm just going to leave it there, but I just, I wanted to make sure that we spoke about that tragedy and especially in light of the city council goal. and especially in light of the city council goal.
Comments, anyone? You know, I'd just like to say to that end, actually, and, you know, as you said, Dan, so eloquently, this hopefully is a chance to have discussions that are difficult. I know Dr. Baker from the university reached out to me today to, in essence, and I'll talk to you offline about that, Dan, a little bit more, but to the idea of, you know, for there, for there's the color who come Newburgh and, you know, what is their relationship, for instance, with the police? And how do we, how do we make sure that there is a discussion and there is a conversation? So anyway, but thank you for sharing that, Dan. All right, any other comments, anyone? Okay, thank you. Public comments, Sue, earlier you said you had none, have any appeared?
There's no public comment and I haven't received any.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comments then. Dan, anything on the issue tracker?
No, nothing new.
Okay, all right. So we're on to public hearings. You will see that we've got three administrative public hearings. We'll start with the first, where's my sheet, sheet? What I do with my, ah, here. All right. All right, so this is an administrative public hearing, resolution twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-two, declaring the city of Newburgh's election to receive state revenues. And then resolution twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-three certifying the provision of municipal services by the city of Newburgh. So let's call this administrative to hear, hearing to order any declaration of conflict of interest or abstentions, folks. Hearing none, the staff report, please, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for entertaining this public hearing. First of three public hearings regarding state shared revenues is in regards to the amount that the state distributes to cities and entities statewide upon meeting certain obligations. One of those sources of revenue is fourteen percent of total liquor revenue. And there are requirements specifically for us to participate in that. It's labeled as state shared, state revenue sharing. And included in the packet is a, the graph that was, or the table that was provided with the budget committee that helps the reader make the connection between what we're talking about here and the budget document. The budget committee, we see, held a public hearing for the quote, possible uses of those revenues on April twenty-eighth. And subsequently, the budget committee passed a motion to approve the staff's recommendation for the use of the state share revenues. And again, the table, you know, including your packet, shows the fourteen percent of total liquor revenues. And then five other sources of state share revenue as well, as well as their amounts. So tonight, this public hearing is the second step in the statement of data process, which is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed uses of this revenue. And so the staff's recommendation to the budget committee was to use these revenues in the general fund to support general fund operations, specifically this fourteen percent of total liquor revenues. And that is, that requirement at this public hearing would be finalized by the adoption of resolution thirty-six seventy-two. There is also an additional requirement for those cities or counties over a hundred thousand in population, which Yamhill County is now, as of the last maybe four years. And so we have to certify that we provide at least four of the listed municipal services, which include fireplace, street construction, utilities, planning, zoning, et cetera. And the city does provide at least four of those. And those, that certification would be accomplished by the adoption of resolution thirty-five seventy-three. So there are a couple of state share revenues that don't require certification or any kind of action by council. And that's in particular nine-one-one emergency tax revenue. Interestingly enough, the state also changed the certification for participation with regards to marijuana tax. And rather than doing a quarterly certification at the staff level, we're now doing an annual certification. So that, there's no, no action necessarily by city council either. So anyways, in the fiscal impact section, you can see listed there the amounts. And you can see in particular, the general fund receives a significant portion of the, you know, fourteen million dollars worth of revenue. And so the, the resolutions here would accomplish what the city needs to do in order to receive these funds. So that's my staff report, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Sue, any public testimony for these, for these resolutions?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any for these items.
Okay, thank you. We will close public testimony then. And the recommendation from staff, Matt?
Recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-two and twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-three.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions of Matt? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second?
Did we get a motion? I don't know.
I'll make.
You got it, Stephanie?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolutions number twenty twenty dash three-six-seven-two and resolution number twenty twenty dash three-six-seven-three.
And now I will second them.
Thank you, Jean. All right, any further discussion? Sue would like a roll call vote on this one.
Yes, hopefully now I've mastered the microphone. Counselor Pirros?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Yornell Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor, the vote is seven-zero.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on then to six C on your program, resolution twenty twenty, no, strike that. Resolutions, this is six B, as in boy, my apologies. Resolution twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-four, adopting the twenty twenty twenty-one budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing the tax. We will open this public hearing, declaration of conflict of interest or abstentions, folks. Okay, hearing none, Matt, the staff report, please.
I appreciate the excitement on everybody's side to jump ahead and get these things done. It's great to see probably the highlight of my evening anyways. So Mayor, Council, this is the culmination of the budget process. And staff report outlines the process that the budget committee took to get here. Listed the meetings there, we accomplished this in COVID times within four meetings. And I think the process went really well. You can see the results. What you are being presented with tonight is the approved budget. And the approved budget is a hundred and nine million dollars and some change, with an FTE of a hundred and thirty-nine and some change. There's also total appropriations of ninety-seven million dollars. And the property tax recommended by the, or approved by the budget committee was two-point-six-five-two-three per thousand. And so there is in the, in the packet, a list of the changes that were made between the proposed budget and the approved budget, just as a recap. And then finally, what you have in front of you tonight is resolution twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-four. And that budget does four things. It approves, excuse me, adopts the budget as in its entirety of the hundred-nine-five-seventy-five-five-eleven. It makes appropriations, which are important legal restrictions on how much can be spent per category. Finally, it imposes the property tax and then it categorizes it according to the cap, the buckets prescribed by Oregon by statutes. So that is my staff report, Mayor. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Let's see, public testimony, we'll take public testimony, five minutes is the allotted time. I know, Sue, that we did receive a letter from Mr. Suppy. Do we have any other, and you all should have seen the letter from, from Mr. Suppy, right? Okay. And then anything else was, do we have any other public comment or anyone else looking to speak?
Yes, Ronnie Vostinak has joined as an attendee and she had indicated she wished to speak. So I'm going to unmute her so she can start.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi. So thank you for letting me visit with you tonight. Homer Bound Pets is celebrating their forty-fifth anniversary as Oregon's first no-kill shelter this year. And of course, we work in all of Yamhill County. Last year, we were recognized as Mutt Nation Foundation's two thousand nineteen Oregon Shelter of the Year. And what I'm asking for is fifteen hundred dollars to go towards our shelter medical fund. Last year, we adopted out six hundred and seventy-five dogs and cats and brought in two hundred and seventy-nine dogs through dog control, with seventy of them needing homes that we took in and got ready for homes. Our medical shelter expense totaled fifty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars last year. This does not include expenses such as food, litter supplies, staffing, et cetera. So that makes the average cost per animal to get ready for adoption about two hundred and fifty dollars, providing they don't need an extensive surgery of any kind. We had thirty-one dogs and cats come to us from the city of Newburgh. So that is an average of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars that we put into animals from the city of Newburgh. We also took in nine Angel Fund animals, which is about six hundred and nine oh-three spent. So we've spent over eight thousand dollars. And a lot of our animals, if we, you know, if they need additional surgeries, we do take them back. I'd say at least fifty percent back to the Newburgh Vet Hospital. So we were bringing funds back into Newburgh where I live. So that's really, I've sent you my packet and we love what we do, we're passionate about it. But COVID has also hit us very hard with closing up all of our parts of our organization for two months. It was about a thirty-nine thousand a month hit, shutting down the thrift shop, the Spainuter Clinic, and the shelter. So we just appreciate you and I'm asking to consider fifteen hundred to help our shelter medical fund. Questions?
Well, hearing none, Ronnie, well, thank you. Thank you very much. I'll probably suggest that we get through the budget itself. There is, there is some money for community support in the general fund, but maybe we'll get through approving the budget first and then we can circle back on this particular request. All right, any?
Wonderful, thank you. Bye-bye.
Of course, thank you. Any other public comments, Sue?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll close public testimony then. The recommendation from staff, please. I think you're muted, Matt.
It's the first time for everybody. Adoption of twenty twenty, resolution twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-four, adopting the twenty twenty-one budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing tax.
All right, any, any deliberation or discussion, folks?
I had a question for Matt.
Go ahead.
Matt, so on your proposed motion, if we were to change it based on the discussion we had during the work session, would it be to, which is with one change, which is to increase the appropriation of, to the general government in the transient lodging fund, tax fund to two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and thirty-one? Is that, would that be appropriate or what, what, how should we amend this motion based on the, I'll phrase it that way?
Based, based on my understanding, Counselor Johnson, you would not need to amend the motion at all. If you were to look in your packet, that page, at the resolution page, three, the thirty thousand dollars that was previously awarded as a grant was expected to be carried forward at the time we did the budget committee process. It was expected to be carried forward as a grant. And so it was budgeted in the category called special payments. If the, my understanding is that the council wants to continue the, to award that thirty thousand dollars in a grant program to be determined in the future. So if that's the way that the council wants to continue moving forward, no change needs to be made to resolution thirty-six seventy-four.
Okay, and Matt, as a follow-on, Mayor, if I might, do we need to outline the approved budget equals a hundred and nine million? Do we have to do all that or is it, is it just a simple approved resolution twenty twenty thirty-six seventy-four?
Just a simple, just a simple approval of this resolution will suffice.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Denise has got the second. All right, any other further discussion? Okay, I will, I will, unfortunately, I will vote no again, sorry. I, as stated during the budget committee meeting, I find it difficult to increase the three percent of our property taxes, given the fact that we did not increase salaries and any kind of cost of living for city staff. And in these times, I, I just find it difficult, but there you go. Any other discussion, folks? Okay, all right. So we have, it's been moved.
Mr. Mayor.
Just please, Stephanie.
Sorry. I am going to vote yes, and I have the same feeling as you in the opposite direction, that I feel like we, I am going to vote yes because I feel like we need to raise revenue in order to have cost of living down the road. So I will vote yes, and I do think it's important that our employees get cost of living. And that's why I think we need to take in as much revenue as we can.
Fair enough. All right, other, other comments, folks?
I'd like to say something. I fundamentally am against the three percent increase. However, in this very uncertain time, doing the programs that we're doing or that we would like to do to assist local business and ratepayers, I feel having more resources and including a three percent increase for one year that was approved by the voters overwhelmingly by eighty percent. I really appreciate Mr. Suppy's historical data he gave us in the charts. However, I think we can all agree, these are uncertain times and they're kind of unique. And so while in the past, we may have been super conservative, I honestly don't think right now, we don't know what's going to happen. And so I, three percent is not a huge amount of money to increase the tax rate. And I think for this year, it's resources that we're going to need.
All right, anyone else? Well, I think maybe for the record, we should mention what Mr. Suppy's letter addressed. So it discussed the idea of projected fund balance versus the actual ending fund balance over a period of years. It, let's see, it also talked about the funding for the communications upgrade, for instance, and that, you know, that could have been, and potentially, again, this is a matter of hindsight, potentially, a bonded item. And what else? I think anybody else? But anyway, and again, it took a lot of work on, oh, and it was a comparison of tax rates to other communities near us. That was the other part. So a lot, you know, thank you to Robert for what was, ended up being a fair amount of work, I'm sure, to put that together. Otherwise, any other comments, folks? Okay, all right then. Sue, we are ready for a voice vote whenever you are.
Counselor Pirros?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Yornell Holloman?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
No.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Counselor Finley.
Yes.
Mayor Sixwan.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to Resolution 2020-3676, adopting supplemental budget number two for fiscal year 2019-20. And let's go, same deal, declaration of conflicts of interest or abstentions, anyone? Alright, hearing none, the staff report, please, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're presenting you with supplemental budget number two, which will cover five funds and is described in your packet. I'll briefly run through those items. In the general fund, we have already talked a little bit about the portion of the budget that is for community support. And this, this year, we've had more community support than we've ever had. And as a result of the programs and support outlined in the packet there, an additional 20, approximately $26,000 is being requested to cover those contributions and that would come from the contingency line item. In the water fund, due to SDC revenues not coming in as anticipated, there is a debt, there are debt service payments that are charged to Water SDC's fund and when those SDC revenues don't come in enough to cover the debt service payments, the water fund transfers money over to the Water SDC fund in order to make those payments. So in this case, this year, we're anticipating the need for $152,000 to come from the water fund and that would be covered by the water fund contingency. The Water SDC fund in and of itself does not need any action taken as a result of the supplemental budget. The 911 fund has, in a source of good news, Office of Emergency Management has provided to reimburse the city for several purchases this year, annual maintenance of the 911 phone system. And that's just annual maintenance, don't get me wrong, but that's only $21,000 to pay for the whole system, but for annual maintenance. And then there's a master street address guide update that was performed this year as well for $6,000. So that, those expenses are offset by revenues that we will receive from the Office of Emergency Management. Fourth fund is the Cable TV fund and this fund has been, had funds from almost two decades ago that have finally been spent on a system that we wish we could use in person in the Public Safety Building for audio and video for public meetings. Fortunately, we're using Zoom at the time, but you've all enjoyed the newer system and that was funded by the remaining funds, the Cable TV fund. And we're doing a supplemental budget because not all of those funds were spent last year so the balance had a higher beginning fund balance. And so we need to do a supplemental budget in order to close, close out that fund. So the fifth and final fund is the Administrative Support Services Fund. And you heard about the Support Local Challenge from Dan. And so we anticipated initial 100,000 and you heard that we ended up at about 160,000 between the immediate credits and then the 17,000 in donations. And so we're asking for another $60,000 to cover that activity. General office expenditures for phones, mobile devices went a little bit higher than we anticipated with the original budget. Liability insurance claims also exceeded our budget. And then general office insurance, those two line items are covered by contingency. So we're asking for $74,000 from contingency for those two items. I'll go back up to the top on that Newburgh Support Local Challenge. That, that is offset by revenue coming in from the water, wastewater and stormwater programs. So in the fiscal impact section, you'll see that we're increasing appropriations by $89,000 across all funds. And there's a breakdown, numerical breakdown as well included in the resolution. So a newspaper, public hearing notice was published last Wednesday, May 27th. And so that met our requirement there. So Mayor and Council, that is the staff report on supplemental budget number two.
Alright, thank you, Matt. Public testimony for this, Sue?
Sorry, I had to switch screens, I was working on the minutes. Okay, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Hearing no public, no one is there to testify, we will close public testimony. And now the recommendation from staff, please.
Recommendation from staff would be to adopt Resolution 2020-3676.
Alright, any further discussion or deliberation, folks? Alright, how's about a motion? Alright.
I will make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2020-3676.
Second.
And Denise with a second. Alright, any further discussion? And I believe we need, hearing none, I believe we need a voice vote on this one as well, please, Sue.
Counselor Pirros.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, couldn't hear you. Counselor Yornell Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor, I have seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, item 6D on the agenda has been moved, that will be addressed on June 15th. So, moving on to new business, Resolution 2020-3677, a resolution waiving type one administrative design review, land use and technology fees related to the placement of emergency water equipment, storage container on properties of program participants. And I believe this is Karen Tarmichael, I believe.
Actually, Mayor, this is Doug, I'm gonna start off.
Oh, are you? Okay.
Karen's going to add to this. So as you indicated, this is a request by the Public Works Department to waive the type one administrative fee for design review. As noted in your RCA, through the Emergency Water Distribution Program, they're looking to fully do or to do 10 storage containers with our hurricane systems and other supplies for emergency situations where water is needed. As your report also indicates, these would be located strategically within the community and Karen will have a PowerPoint that will outline that in more detail. But those locations would be accessible within a mile. Council has previously adopted a resolution in regards to MOUs to be entered into with different organizations within the community. In your fiscal impact section of your report, we estimated using the current fee schedule we have, which went into effect on April 1st of 2020, for 10 particular units and that would be a cost of roughly $4,700 in application fees for those. Russ Thomas, our interim Public Works Director, sent me some additional information today, noting that four to five of these containers are currently available through the Office of Emergency Management and in coordination he's done with the surplus property coordinator. The balance of the 10 are up at Joint Base Lewis McCord. And with the coronavirus, they're kind of locked down at this point in time, but they're hoping that those will get shipped down to Salem within the next couple of months. At this point, I would like to turn this over to Karen Tarmichael, who will give you a bit of a presentation on the Emergency Water Distribution Program.
Karen, you're muted.
We'll try it again, is that better?
There we go.
Good evening. My name is Karen Tarmichael, I'm with Public Works Project Specialist. I'm working with Russ Thomas on the Emergency Water Program. Next slide, please. So, as you all are already aware, water being an essential requirement for health, for agriculture, industry, ecosystem. City of Newburgh has a municipal water system. So providing safe potable water is our responsibility and we do that through a number of avenues. We protect our source from pollution, from overuse, from waste. We have vigilant testing and treatment. We maintain our infrastructure, we plan for growth. But what we need to also focus on is preparing for unexpected interruption in services. Next slide. As some of you can remember, some of our disasters haven't been disasters, they've been small interruptions. For example, some of you will remember 2014 when we lost a water main on College Street and had a neighborhood that was flooded and without water for more than just a few hours. We have interruptions that can be regional, small neighborhoods, issues that only affect a small number of our citizens for a short time. However, on the next slide, I'll remind you that we also have large disasters that can happen and they happen here often. River Gorge wildfires were an example just three years ago. Obviously, the famous Columbus Day storm. These interruptions can happen for long periods of time. Next slide, Sue. So here's what we do have with regards to emergency water. We have 14 portable water filtration units. You fondly hear people call them the hurricane systems. They have a stock of replacement filters here. These run on power, they run on generators, they run by gravity feed, they are portable, they are suitcase sized. I have pulled one around myself. We have 14 of these in the city currently. We have identified a map with all our natural water resources. If the reservoirs in the well field are not accessible to us, we know where else to get non-potable water to filter. We have a means to transport the water to various locations. What we don't have is the volume of staff that would take to deploy those units and run them to serve our community. We have staff that may be tending to other issues, supporting police, other storm debris. We have people who will be on shift, but we may have people at home out of the city tending to an emergency of their own family. We can't staff 20 people 24 hours a day to provide water. We don't have enough people. Next slide. So knowing that city personnel and equipment and our funding is not able to be the sole responder in an emergency and knowing that geographically we're likely to get cut off from other support, we need a way to get safe drinking water to the public in a time of emergency. Next slide. So what you're seeing on this next one here is a map of the city. Our Emergency Water Distribution Program is going to be a partnership with strategically located water system equipment placed at community organizations throughout town. They will be able to filter water and provide safe drinkable water to the community. We have 10 locations funded by the grant. We have 10 backup locations in case any of those organizations do not feel they can do so. We have an 11th station at the water maintenance, or the fleet maintenance location. They will also be our training location. This means that we will have within a half mile or so of every resident a bikeable, walkable or car, if they're able to use them, reachable location for safe filtered drinking water. Friends who, by the way, already has their own water emergency system online. I do encourage you when things are open again to see it, it is a very impressive and robust system. They'll be able to serve their entire community. Next slide, please. So that's where we are now. The city is going to provide, thanks to the grant funding, all the supplies for the water filtration equipment, the complex storage unit and all the small paraphernalia that go into filtering water and handing it out to the public. We will provide the training for the participants. We will maintain ownership and upkeep of the equipment. We're required to do so for six years with the grant and then we can continue to do so at our discretion after that. We will do all the placing and removing of the complex containers. The participants will enter into the MOU that Doug just discussed with you, agreeing to participate. They will provide a core team of volunteers. They will develop a traffic and safety plan. They will agree to deploy emergency water services to any person who needs to come and get it when we as the city have officially asked them to open up their emergency kit. And they will notify us if ever there's a problem with the unit so we can attend to it right away. Next slide. So the program was officially funded in October. We do have to spend all the money on equipment by September, which is why Russ Thomas is working so hard to get the units. Small supply procurement is almost completed. When I say small supplies, I mean the generators, the fuel tanks, the disinfectant hose couplings, emergency flashlights, all that equipment. The SOPs are being written up and laminated and we will start working with each group that signs up to establish their safety plan and their contact plan as we proceed. Participants are enrolling, we have our first signed MOU with First Presbyterian Church. We have two more pending that are being reviewed by organizations and then we're going to continue to go out and meet with each group virtually or in person as we're able to solicit all 10 of our locations. Next slide. So here's where we are now. Next, our staff is gonna continue to get all of our supplies and the complex containers here. We're gonna continue our outreach until we have our 10 locations. We're going to support the participants in all the planning that they need to do, recognizing that we have expertise in that area. Hold our training sessions and then process the type one design reviews that are required for each location. The participating organizations need to enter the MOUs with us. They need to gather their volunteer group and they need to plan their space, including a traffic and safety plan for their volunteers. Which brings us to this evening and our request of council for the waiver for the design review and technology fees. And that is all I have unless there are questions.
Alright, questions, anyone? Karen, this may be an obvious question, but I would imagine then the fees are not an eligible grant expense then, I would, I would guess.
That was correct.
Okay, thank you. And then on one of the slides you had, there were a bunch of hearts on the slide, are those possible sites or what were those?
Oh, so when I did the map search, it showed every one of the addresses I entered just as a heart, as a favorite. And I didn't know how to fix that from my home computer.
No, no, no worries, I was just, I just, I was hoping people were waiting in line to be able to join this program, so.
Oh, I would love that.
Right, right. Alright, any other questions, folks, for Doug or for Karen? Alright, hearing none then, what is your recommendation, folks?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-3677, waiving design review and technology fees for the placement of complex storage units provided by the city under the Emergency Water Distribution Program.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? I just, how much money, it's $4,000, is that what it was, is that what I saw?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, Doug, again, it's slightly over $4,700, based on our current fee schedule.
Great, thank you. All right, so it's been moved in second, any further discussion?
Mayor, you may have a hand up, I'm not sure.
Do I? Do I have a hand up?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, hello.
That was from earlier, I just forgot to put it back down.
See, see how alert I am, I never even saw the hand. All right, all right, any, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, that looks like everybody except, at least, I can't tell how you're voting. That's a yes, oh, there he is. All right, the junior counselor is, is with us now. All right, so the, the motion passes, or the resolution passes, thank you very much, Doug and Karen, thank you. All right, moving on to council committee reports, anybody have anything this evening? Okay, hearing none. So just a couple things, I, so we have this request from Home or Down Pets, you know, I'm sure it won't be the, the last request we're going to get, so I'm not sure if we want to determine a method to consider those. Any thoughts on that, Dan?
I'm sorry, the thoughts on the process, or thoughts on the actual award?
I was, I was thinking process first, but.
I, you know, I guess I'd like to hear from the council, as far as whether that's something you'd like us to, to do, and then we can probably bring it back. You know, certainly, there is, I think was noted, there's money in the community program fund, and so that could be used. I guess I'm hesitant to start allocating it, you know, without necessarily thinking, I guess comprehensively, as to all the possible uses for that, but that's certainly a possible source.
Okay. Any other thoughts, folks, counselors?
Yeah, I have a thought. I feel like the last two budget cycles, I'm like glowing in the sun. The last two budget sessions, we've said like, oh, we're not going to, you know, hear community requests, because we'll do it at a separate time. And I just feel like I'm confused, I guess, as to, I mean, I would be happy to hear, you know, to put actually out in a work session or something, to hear different community requests with X amount of dollars. I thought that we had actually recommended that last year. So I don't know if that's what the community line item is for, was intended to be for, or for what. But I, you know, I love that Ronnie presented, I would just want to be able to honor others that might have similar.
And I think that had been the intent, we talked about in the development of the budget, having a larger amount of money in that pocket, but, you know, not having much money to go around. I think it, it went from an aspirational amount to a more realistic amount, and so, yeah, I think that would be beneficial, though, is to have an opportunity that's advertised for groups to, if they are interested in, in receiving some of the $10,000, to make a pitch, but maybe that's part of the $30,000 of TLT, no, probably not.
Could be part of the same type of process, though.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think, you know, just, I would definitely recommend not just one, but trying to beat the bushes a little bit for more.
All right, any other thoughts on that, folks? But as, as Elise said, maybe a, you know, maybe a session to figure out how to put the word out, and how much money, and all of that would be, would be a good thing. All right, now, we received a letter very end of the day today from Megan Zarneki. Are we gonna hold that until the next city council meeting? I don't think you all saw it, I don't know if anybody, I don't think it was distributed. Okay, so, Dan, will we hold that until, until the next?
Yeah, I think, you know, that seems fine, I honestly haven't had a chance to read it yet, myself.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, it came in very end of the day, so we'll, we'll get back to that. Did have to, did have to do, generally, I scanned it anyway, Police Department and Citizens Oversight, we've heard about it, the subject before, so that's the main subject that is. And we'll be back to that, so if Megan happens to be listening in, we will get back to your letter soonest. Another question, another question, Dan, if, if we were to get reimbursed for any of the money that was spent for COVID, either the business or the other, the utility program, would there be any consideration to, to opening one of these programs again?
I have no idea, honestly, I mean, I haven't really thought about that yet, and I think, you know, since Matt, I think, has signed off for the night, I'd want to talk to him about, you know, process on something like that, and, you know, I, I'm not sure of the timing, to be honest, of reimbursement, you know, our request is one thing, but, you know, receiving the money is another, and certainly with businesses reopening, at least in some fashion, certainly not the way that we'd all like them to, you know, maybe something that we should maybe just discuss and see what's appropriate, depending on when we receive reimbursement, assuming we do, because again, the, the business programs were not included in this first round, you know, the incentives, and so we're not likely to see those immediately by any stretch, the reimbursements.
Although we wrote him a letter and said how much we thought it would be a good idea for them to reimburse it, but they, they haven't taken us up on that suggestion as yet, maybe round two.
Let's hope.
Let's hope, let's hope. Okay, so I've got on here that we'll, we've got to come back and discuss the $30,000, as Patrick said, on the TLT funding, so we'll be back to that one, and you all will come back to us with some concept, Truman and all, on private streets. And then, the last thing, Sue, did you want to tell us about what we have in the way of volunteers needed?
Yes. We, sorry, I'm gonna turn the volume down on the conference phone. We need a planning commissioner to replace Alan Edwards, who is relocating to Texas, June will be his last meeting. And then we need a citizens rate review commissioner, I know we just appointed one, but we had someone who, Marie Maxwell, who will not renew her term. So we have those two openings, we did fill our student positions, thank you Colin Bullock for helping promote that, he's our student planning commissioner, and reached out to some students. And those will be coming before you on June 15th, but right now, we do need a planning commissioner and citizens rate review commissioner.
All right, well, thank you very much, so everybody get the word out, we are looking for volunteers. And again, as, as Dan mentioned at the onset, the opening for election filing is June 3rd, 1, 3, and 5, I believe, of the district, so, and I haven't heard from our, I know, I've heard from one of our city councils, but I haven't heard from the other two, as to whether they're planning on trying to re-up for another four Funfield years, I haven't heard yet, so.
Lincoln and I will be running.
Oh, good, all right, Lincoln, all right.
I will too.
You are, okay, there we go, there we go, good deal, that's, that's good news for the evening, so thank you, folks. Any, anything else, anything else for the good of the order? Huh, alrighty, well, with that, thank you, right, keep doing all the good things that you're doing, and we'll see you here, same bat station on June 15th, so if not sooner, so, see you later, have a nice season.
Thanks.
Bye, Lincoln.